City of Oconomowoc, Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 18th, 2025. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
If yes, Your Honor.
Former Mayor Colten, Coltenburg, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everyone. Would you please call roll?
Mulder, Alderman Mulder?
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Here.
Alderman Maroney?
Here.
Alderman Douglas?
Here.
Alderman Rosak?
Here.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Here.
Alderman Ellis?
Yep.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Here.
Like to entertain a motion for the approval of minutes from March 4th, 2025. So moved. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Onto comments and suggestions from citizens. This is a part of our meeting where you have three minutes to share your thoughts with council members. This is not a public hearing, this is not an, this is not an open dialogue, it's an opportunity, again, for you to share your comments to council members on any topic you wish. When you come to the podium, please introduce yourself, your name, your address, and we look forward to hearing from you. Let's start with Finley Peeler.
First of off, sorry, it's Peeler, P.E., yeah.
Thank you.
Peeler, Peeler. So, obviously this is my first time being at one of these meetings, I'm 20 years old, my address is 1530 Allen Road, I live here in Wisconsin pretty much all my life, and again, this is my first meeting, I am young, and I have relatively no idea what to say. But, here's one of my other, the small things is, because I'm young, and I fear for the future, I just want there maybe to be some more, I guess, I feel like, looking at everyone else's faces around here, I feel I might be the youngest one in this room. So I was wondering if there are some way that we could get more young people involved in kind of citywide politics? Because, obviously, the young people are the ones that, when the old people, when the older people die, because death happens, the young people are gonna be the ones that are gonna be leading the way. So, I guess I was hoping to, that maybe, I don't know, how can we appeal, how can we, you know, maybe get young people more involved in our citywide politics? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Volunteer.
Volunteers, yeah, very good. Gary Colenberg?
Gary Colenberg, 345 River Bluff Circle, Oconomowoc.
Welcome back, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the Common Council, to allow me to voice my opinion and concerns regarding the proposed pavilion at Village Green. We have a bathroom shortage in downtown Oconomowoc, not a pavilion shortage. Building a pavilion at Village Green would be a mistake on the lake. The city has roughly $1 million in TIF money to spend with a use-it-or-lose-it soft deadline of 2025, and a hard deadline of 2026. Instead of expending the money on an unnecessary pavilion costing millions of dollars, I urge you to use the TIF money to expand our lakefront. When criteria is met, the land acquisition is a permissible use of TIF funds. Exercise your eminent domain authority to acquire the gravel pit directly north on Main Street. This expansion will increase the Village Green from 1.5 acres to 1.9 acres and create a lasting benefit for our community. The demand for bathrooms can be met for a fraction of the $5 million projected cost for the unnecessary pavilion by bumping out a section of the adjacent land next to the et cetera bar and grill. Please, table the vote scheduled for tonight to a future date and explore better options. Expanding Village Green is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. Pause the vote, make a better choice, create a keepsake on the lake, not a mistake on the lake. Thank you, and Mr. Mayor, may I approach the clerk and give her this to hand out to the city council? Thank you.
Next up is Jim Juno.
I don't think I need the mic, but hold it up to the side.
Yeah, if you can talk into the mic, if everyone can talk into the mic.
My address is N 6779 Morgan Road. I'm here to ask mostly District 4 about the house that was burned down there two years ago that's still standing. Nothing's been done to it, nothing's been going on, and it's sat there, it's been for two years or more. I know it's not in the city limits, close by, so everybody sees it, but now with two years of an empty building that's half burned down, I can't imagine what's living in there. Well, I can, because I see it all the time, unfortunately, but I wanna know what can be done to take care of that, either knock it down or rebuild, one of the two. But somebody's gotta do something about it now after two years.
Thank you. And next up is Harley Narlock.
Holly Narlock, I live at 36 South Worthington Street, and I'm here to speak regarding the Village Green proposed project, pavilion project. I've recently watched the last council meeting and spoken to three of the aldermen and Mayor Magnus, and reviewed public comments and postings on social media. I live and work downtown, I've 26 years personally experiencing the changes and events in these areas. Based on the cumulative information, I completely understand the need for public restrooms and the negative impact not having public restrooms is having on the local businesses. I do not, however, understand the chosen placement of this proposed structure, nor the need for the proposed permanent pavilion here, and honestly think it's a poor use of the, what I understood was the $5 million available for the project. There's been a lot of talk about the eyesore left by the Rockwell developers, and one alderman went so far as to say this pavilion placement is to block the view of the eyesore. My office looks out at the Village Green, I have to say that the other end of the Village Green, the northwest side of 118 East Wisconsin Avenue, is not much more appealing to look at. I don't know what happened to the prior plan of attaching public restrooms along that northwest side of 118 East Wisconsin, and there wasn't much insight from the aldermen on this either, except that it somehow blocks the view. Either way, a restroom structure on the Village Green is gonna block views to the lake and boardwalk, and I'm thinking wouldn't attaching it to a pre-existing structure do less to block the views than planting a structure right next to the proposed alleyway. I also was curious if that alleyway could present any hazards if lines of people extend into that alleyway during the events when they're using the restrooms. I understand and appreciate all the time and energy you all have put into this project. At the time, I think there are too many unanswered questions and community concerns for the city to move forward with this proposed project in good conscience, and therefore I am not as, not in support of this project. Moving forward, I would also like to recommend that the city find better ways to communicate the plans of these proposed projects before they're up for a deciding vote. Limited viewing hours of poster board presentations at the community center, or having to search through council meeting minutes, or reaching out to my alderman to try to have them send it to me, are just cumbersome ways of getting information. It'd be helpful to have some type of tab or link on the first page of the city website that residents could click on to view the images and even vote or make comments or ask questions when contemplating large-scale projects that are affecting the community like this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Fred Strampy.
My name is Fred Stramp, and I've introduced myself to some of you already. I am running for Circuit Court Judge here in Waukesha County, and I'm trying to introduce myself to as many both members of the public and members of the different municipality governments as I can. I'm running for Circuit Court Judge for two reasons. First, Waukesha County needs experienced judges who are gonna protect the community by enforcing the rule of law while treating everyone fairly. Second, as a veteran myself, I believe that Waukesha County needs a Veterans Treatment Court, and I'm running so that I can lead the charge to establish the Veterans Treatment Court and hopefully be the first judge to preside over the Veterans Treatment Court. My background is that I grew up in Wausau, Wisconsin. When I graduated from high school, I received an appointment to the United States Military Academy at West Point, graduated from West Point and was commissioned as an infantry officer, spent about four and a half years on active duty, mostly in Germany, decided that I needed an indoor job, and resigned my commission and went to law school in Madison. While I was in law school, I got a job as a law clerk at the law firm of Bregelt, Powell, Peterson, and Fraun, defending civil litigation, so not criminal litigation, civil litigation defense. Worked there for roughly 25 years, the last five years of which I was the president of the firm. I then applied for and received an appointment to the Waukesha County Circuit Court in late 2022. Unfortunately, three months after I started, I had to run for election, and I lost that election by a few percentage points. I took some time off and decided to recommit myself to service, and I'm running so that I can continue my service to our country and to our community, and primarily by establishing that Veterans Treatment Court. I may look familiar to some of you, and if you've been to a high school football game in the past 25 years, I've been a referee for that time and have been to every high school in Waukesha County numerous times. I point that out just because, A, I might look familiar, and B, my philosophy as a judge is very similar to my philosophy as a football official. You know, I'm there to enforce the rules, I'm not there to have any preconceived opinions as far as which side should prevail, or which side is, has the more persuasive argument or the better opportunities. I just look at the rules, apply them fairly, treat everyone with respect, and that's what I think we should have in Circuit Court Judges, and that's what I hope to do. I will stick around for the end of the meeting in case anyone has any questions for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Gilson? And you can pull the microphone closer to you.
So, Linda Gilson, 412 North Lake Road.
Can you speak into the microphone, please, because we're recording? Thank you.
Test, test, yes? Okay. Linda Gilson, 412 North Lake Road. The City of Oconomowoc Downtown Architectural Guidelines Comprehensive 2050 Plan, Downtown Revitalization Plan, and Downtown Historic Overlay Zoning District Ordinance, each and all provide information for new construction within the downtown historic district. All three state that new construction should reflect the historic character of downtown Oconomowoc. The proposed design of the Village Green Pavilion and Bathroom do not comply with any of these, the Architectural Guidelines, Revitalization Plan, or the Downtown Overlay District Ordinance. It does not meet the goal to preserve the historic integrity of downtown as required in the Downtown Historic Overlay Zoning Ordinance. The proposed Pavilion and Bathroom design does not reflect the area's historic identity as outlined in the Downtown Revitalization Plan, where it states that "the area around the four corners is historically and culturally significant to the identity of downtown Oconomowoc." The Village Green and the buildings that border it should be redesigned to better reflect the area's historic identity. This pavilion design does not preserve or enhance the area's unique historic character as recommended in the Downtown Architectural Guidelines. The papers you have are photos. One and two is our, a double light lamppost at each of the four corners, stoplight which complements the historic buildings. Number three, how the three, how the street lamppost complements the historic home behind it. Four, lower portion of a street lamppost showing ornate elements. Pictures one through four show an example of how we got it right. Five, building at southwest corner of downtown, notice the flared and detailed cornices on these buildings. Number six, the historic Draper Hall Pavilion with ornate arches and posts bracing the roofline and details on top of the roofline. And the last one is the current Puywaki Beach Pavilion. All photos have some type of architectural element, whereas the proposed Pavilion does not. Improving Village Green by providing bathrooms and canopy is greatly appreciated, but the design does not complement the surrounding buildings or have elements that conform to the historic theme of downtown. Adding ornate historic features would reflect the area's historic character, adding elegant motif designs and patterns, beautiful floral geometrics, and calming sounds from a tiered or Victorian-style fountain or wishing well adds life and interest, so that with some imagination, it could possibly take you back in time.
Thank you. Sarah Ninman?
Good evening, Sarah Ninman, downtown business owner and Director of Community Events for the Chamber of Commerce of Oconomowoc. So, I feel like we've been on this huge journey together, I wanted to come up and say a couple of things before you guys go into the process. I've talked to several of you today, so what I wanna say is, if we, if we vote yes, I include me in this vote, even though I'm not in it, but I feel like I'm on this journey with you guys. If, if the vote becomes yes today, I wanna thank you for the time, I think it's gonna be a great design, we certainly have done our due diligence, we've held community meetings, we've had it in the newspaper, we've met, we've talked to people, even if people didn't engage, I feel as if we've done our due diligence to put that out there in this town. I believe that if we vote yes today, it's gonna be well-received. We all know, you all voted that we need bathrooms, that we want bathrooms, we're in dire need of restrooms down there. I think the pavilion's a great idea for the future events that are gonna happen down here, for the current events that we are running, the renovation from the, all the other items that, that Jason has done a great job at thinking about and, and implementing. It creates a safer environment for us, it helps us create better power issues down there. I run 15 events down there on a yearly basis, and I know the need down there, if we're gonna keep up with the current events, and I can only imagine the additional events that are gonna happen as we grow as a community. Again, it's a very event-driven community, we all know that, we all say that, we all brag about that, we all wanna continue that. We need this space to go forward and to utilize this. If the vote is no, if the vote is no today, for whatever reason that this group determines, and I trust all of you will come to that, I just ask for a solution on the back end of that. It just can't be no, and it can't be dropped. It can't be no, and we're gonna push the can down the road, it can't just be no with nothing behind it. It has to be something that we understand that, no, we're gonna change the size of it, no, we're gonna change the location of it, no, we're gonna revamp this, it just can't be no. We have to have a solution, and it has to come within a timely manner. So when you think about today, and if it's gonna be yes, thank you. I think it's gonna be amazing, and I think we're gonna do great things. But if it's no for the reasons that you guys decide, please, please understand that that no comes with a responsibility and a timely flash-in to be able to give, give this community and me the solution behind that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other blue cards? I believe I've read them all. Have I missed, excuse me, have I missed anyone? Thank you all for sharing your comments. We're gonna move on to our consent agenda items, item 5A and B. Unless you want to remove or discuss any, I'd like to entertain a motion for those consent agenda items. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? And we'll move on to our committee reports. First is Public Services, Consider Act on Resolution 25-R 3264, approving the additional design services for the Village Green improvements. Mr. Herzog.
Thank you, Mayor. So I got a couple items that I'll be bringing forward, they both relate to the Village Green, and first off, I just want to address some of the design efforts that have gone into this project. They're extensive, as we knew, and I also want to share the, the value that we spent as staff putting this together to develop a scope that we could reach out and try to get a designer on board, recognizing that those efforts are often rewarded in less of work in trying to do something by hiring the consultants out. And just to recap, some of those efforts from our, our side is, a team was put together on a staff level almost a year ago, a little bit more, to develop some ideas to present and to discuss to the community. A lot of those were pulled together, and we did hold multiple public information meetings, they were held at the community center. Many of you had joined, a lot of our friends, it was well-attended, and we did post a lot of those renderings on billboards, and we posted them at the community center for feedback. We did an online polling for additional question and feedback, a lot of that was real valuable in developing the scope of that. What happens after that is, we reached out to the community, we received a number of different proposals to build a consultant and a design team to pull this work together. We also included a couple alternates inside of that project that were not awarded at the time. Some of it was related to survey work on the adjacent properties to the north when it came to easement work and design work of extending the boardwalk. That was identified in our proposal and scope of work, it was not taken at the time. Some of these costs that are inside of this item relate to those items, as it was a design scope to expand the boardwalk as an alternate, and you see some of those costs associated to that. Ultimately, the design was a, kind of a back-and-forth effort. There was a number of different committees, council, architectural board, that we were asked to come back to multiple times to address some of those issues. All those types of back-and-forth and extra renderings resulted in a lot of mechanical adjustments to the building, and resulted in higher costs of the design. The design right now, as it sits, it was $163,710 design, and the request right now is to add $68,500 to complete the design work that's finished, so that we could award and work with a contractor to build this. Those are in your, your packet tonight. The total that would, this design effort would be is around $232,210. Those are all design that would contribute to the construction cost that was around $3.6 million. Often, as the engineering reports come up, roughly 10% of that is devoted to design efforts, so roughly $360,000, so you can see we are within that estimate of what is being used for design. So, right now, I can answer any questions, as this did go to committee for discussion.
So I'd like to open it up to council for questions or comments for Mr. Herzog. For those in the audience, prior to this council meeting, these issues went, did, did go through committee at detail, but also the council wanted to make sure that their comments were also brought out into the public forum. So, council members, any comments for Mr. Herzog? Alderman Ellis?
Yeah, I just wanna understand the 10%, which we had originally agreed and approved, it seems as though it's a little more than it is now. Can you explain again why?
Yes. So, the original bid was $163,710, and council approved a 10% contingency at $16,000. This is, exceeds that, and this item would require a supermajority vote on this budget amendment for this item. No, the next one does. This one does not. This one is simply, the work that was in excess, it was not identified until our late meetings, when we had discussion back and forth with architectural board three times, council, the council was presented three times, those were not identified in our scope. Those resulted in majority of the costs that are, exceed that 10%.
Good question.
Any other questions from council?
Not a question, but I think just to make it clear that this is work that's already been completed, we're paying for work that's already happened.
Yeah, correct.
I just wanna make that clear to everyone who's, you know, listening, it's not a prospective thing, it's something that's already happened.
This was a design effort to get us into the construction and complete that.
Right, so we're paying bills for work that's already been completed.
Thank you, yes. Alderman Ellis?
So I guess, another question is, I didn't know that we paid for work without being approved that work. So, in essence, we did the 10%, and they spent that money, and then they went above and beyond that and worked more without us approving that work. So now, we're kind of chasing it. Do you follow what I'm saying? I didn't think, when we put that in, in force, that that's what we were supposed to, that that was, I didn't think that was kind of the way we wanted it to be. I thought it was, if somebody sees some additional work that has to be done, they come in front of us, we then approve it, they then do it, and they get paid. The way I see this happening is, they did the work, they're coming in front of us to tell us it's more than the 10%, and then we pay it. So, I, I don't know. I mean, it's already done, it's already done.
Yeah, and to be fair, we did mention this at each of the men, each of the board meetings, that each of these return and request and updates cost additional money. Our architect was at those meetings, they were aware of those types of things. The hard part is putting those numbers to it until you have the, the staff do them, and that's what we're seeing right now. It was mentioned at those meetings.
Alderman Rozak?
Thank you, Jason. My one comment on this is, you know, professional services are a lot, there was a lot of design that did go into the project. It's, it's actually only about 4% of the total cost of the whole project, so it's really a small amount, whether it's a yes or no tonight, there's portions of the design that could certainly be used in the future. I'll also say, I went to some of those architectural board meetings, and they were long and semi-painful on odd details that I think we could rely on our architect to work out versus, you know, so, and there were three of those meetings, and every time they went back, there were additional changes. In fact, in the third meeting, they had more changes and more suggestions. Not substantive, not like, oh, you know, redesign it or change it, but small little tweaky things that cost a tremendous amount of money to go back into those plans and change, so, and without a lot of real clear direction from the Architectural Commission on what they were really looking for. What was the overall goal of, of coming back over and over and over again? Where, when the actual plans that, that you originally showed us, over those three meetings, didn't change a lot. So, I, I think the one, the one lesson from this is, when we're doing city-led projects, where we're on the tab for it, is, let's be cautious about spending a lot of time in front of the architectural board when we've got the clock running.
Any other comments from council? Like to entertain a motion? Rozak, so moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder?
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper?
Aye.
Alderman Maroney?
Aye.
Alderman Douglas?
Aye.
Alderman Rosak?
Aye.
Alderman Altman-Cloth?
Aye.
Alderman Ellis?
Aye.
And Alderman Spiegelberg?
Aye.
Under our next item, Consider Act on Resolution 25-R 3260, awarding the Village Green Reconstruction Contract and the Budget Amendment. For the audience, this is a budget amendment which requires a supermajority vote by the council, so there are eight council members sitting today, so we will, if this moves forward with the yes, it will require six yeses, and less, anything less than six yeses, it will fail. Mr. Herzog?
All right, thank you again. So I'll continue- All right. Thank you again. So I'll continue with the same thought. We're looking at a lot of the work that was produced tonight, as I want to kind of clarify and be fair to the project, as this site is a fabulous spot. Everybody agrees. Nobody's really contending that, as this project was always designed to be an exciting project for the community to be a part of, as we know it gets used 365 days. And that was one of the challenges that we had looked at from day one, was knowing that we have multiple events. We've gone through them all. We've either been at them or seen them or been a part of them ourselves. And to also build a park and a system that offers entertainment for those other 350 days of the year that it doesn't have an event, and to be useful for that, for to be useful for our events, our parades, the daily offering, and who knows what's to come. So I wanted to kind of remind some of you that, you know, the values and the costs that are being thrown out there are more than just the bathrooms, are more than just the pavilion. This is a variety of different pieces of work that kind of went into this whole project. We heard from the community, and we tried to blend through it. I sat down with just about every group and tried to accommodate as much as we could. As you'll, you can ask me how we derived this, and most likely I'll have an answer on why we had to do that. So just walking through that, I wanted to kind of remind everybody some of the feedback that I had heard, that the team had heard from the different varieties of groups that we were able to work with. And a lot of it was, it was sitting at the four corners. We wanted a fantastic gateway into the, into the park, honoring the, you know, the American flag. As right now, it kind of sits offset from it on a, you know, it needs work to it, and trying to blend some of that work in there, screen the traffic signal in the street lighting cabinet. A lot of that was kind of incorporated into it. Obviously, the corner of the lake was a huge interest in improving. It's very hard to manage sometimes with some of the stormwater and the corner in there, but we still wanted to maintain access for dogs and seating and access to the lake. So we didn't want to restrict that. Really wanted to work with the project. I think it was a fantastic idea to work very similar concept that we did over at our Rockwell Park. The boardwalk is fantastic. It's a, you know, real award winner for the community, as we wanted to continue that. Some of the big elements inside of that are kind of forgotten in oversight, but they get blended in and pulled together with the extension ongoing around it and really extending this feature over here. The gazebos, public works, staff built the ones on the other side. We're trying to do the same here and work with some of the passive seating and the vegetation. There's a variety of that going on throughout the park. A lot of the little open areas and kind of the breaking up of the monotonous concrete with the brick pavers are a theme that's kind of gone through, and a lot of the concrete seat walls are a big piece that were of interest from the community to provide some seating that could be handled that we don't really have right now. We've got plastic chairs that kind of get blown around and beaten up, thrown and blown in the lake and whatnot. So we wanted something more substantial, but not restrictive. It also provides our lighting, as we are able to light the bottoms of them and work that through the park that we don't really have right now. For sure, this is a rendering. This is hard to compare against actual things. So please, use an open mind, as these are very high-end pieces of the structure that will be built for the roof, as they are powder-coated metals and woods. We tried to bring in the boardwalk theme and trying to stay consistent with some of those themes and, you know, providing an access for some of the bands that do go on there. This isn't to compete with the band shell. This was intended to really help the community and possibly like, you know, we're all familiar with a beer garden, and you see one, two, three-piece band sets that are up there. This wasn't made for a huge performance. This is a smaller stage that we could handle some of those, some promotional things, lighting. This thing has a fantastic option to pull lighting in to light this area. I chose to kind of go with this. As you can kind of see, as we are trying to maintain a flat surface and work through this park and into the restrooms and back to this north area, which I'll refer to it as the accessway, pedestrian walkway, loading, it could be a variety of different things. It was meant to be flexible. It was meant to help some of the events as they stage out of the way. I'll talk more about that. As last week, we were looking at and hearing from the Rockwell Partners, as they wanted that accessway to be maintained. This is an image that we saw last council meeting, where they were looking at a 68-foot setback from the north shared property line. I believe the council members have received an update. Their request has been reduced down to 24 feet and looking at a smaller footprint for that, as this foot, this image right here was really restrictive and kind of project killer for trying to do this type of project and maintain the current events. So with that in mind, they were looking at this to maintain access for, you know, a future project. We don't have one in the House right now to kind of work with or to gather information, but this is that area. I presented during that meeting real quick, we were never eliminating access. This has always been on our project. We knew that that access was to be a part of our project. Very similar to what's out there right now. It's roughly 15 feet and maybe a little bit more out there right now, is a little bit of gravel. Again, this is the full picture. Our proposed project has always been 15-foot accessway. It's 23 feet from that north shared line to that closest point of our building. Adjust your eyes a little bit. This is a cross-section, roughly. I quickly kind of put this together for discussion. On the left is the north. So this is our shared property line. Our proposed project had a six-foot offset setback to put in this accessway, and it was kind of flush going towards the edge of the building and transitioned in there. That's at the shortest point, so it had a 15-foot roughly accessway. That's this area right here. This is from our plans that were shared to our contractors. It's in almost the identical location of driveway that's out there right now. So this is that 15-foot accessway. What I think we can do to kind of work with some of the needs going forward from our neighbors to the north is adding a three-foot pavement right in this area. That would extend 15 to 18, and 18 feet is our by ordinance, that is our width of an alleyway to handle two-way traffic. I think they were also addressing some of the needs for the future, when a project ever does come there, and recognizing if this is going to be accessed with vehicles, that maybe a sidewalk should be incorporated into our project. And I think my idea here is to try to offer up some solutions to our project without jeopardizing and rebidding the project. And adding three feet up here could be an option. Adding a five- or six-foot sidewalk on this north side so that we could raise that up and give some protection for pedestrians to walk that way from the boardwalk, and still be able to, you know, adjust minor things inside of our design so that we can get pedestrians and people safely from the boardwalk, back and forth with our sidewalk, and still, you know, be able to utilize this space. In order to do that, I think what we would probably look at doing is taking this same footprint of the restroom and pulling it a little bit to the south, maybe equal amount as the sidewalk. I'm not sure yet. Just want to kind of pull the council on some ideas like that. What we would do is we would not be moving this stage any further south. My thought there is that that will impact the events too much and will already be causing conflict with that. So what we can do is just not build as much concrete here. This line would hold the rest of the project to the south. Inside the park would stay as is. Going back to the thought of just the cross-section, instead of a six-foot setback, we would do a three-foot, which by our zoning and setback ordinance, we are good with, and we could offer an 18-foot accessway and possibly a five-to-six-foot sidewalk. Why I said 18, this is the same group that's building the five-unit condo to the north near our Rockwell Park. It's going up, and we've worked with them, and you can see they access off of Lake Drive, and they go down, and they have underground parking to a garage. That was a very similar setup from what they presented last council meeting. This is their plan. This is their condo, and this is the drive that goes into the garage door, and that is being proposed at 18 feet. So staying consistent with that thought, to handle in and out traffic would be consistent with what we could offer. Does anybody have any questions about that? Otherwise, I'll keep walking through some of this.
One question. Alderman Maroni.
So with the three feet that we're going to, the option that you're proposing, will we still have, you know, everything that we want to do with that stage area? Nothing will be affected?
Yeah. So the square footage in here would be reduced. It would stay the same width, which would still help accommodate the, you know, the setups that we currently have. I think it's a very similar size. I would not recommend going much shorter than that.
Thank you.
Okay. Continue.
Just for reference, I wanted to show this image again, as this is just a could-be. We've worked with the German Christmas market. I'm not saying this is what they will do, but I just wanted to share some, you know, how it kind of fits with what we did and worked with them. So again, I mean, this is the big project. This isn't just the building. This is the entire site. One of the huge advantages that, you know, kind of is intentionally laid out so you don't recognize it extremely well is our park protection. Right here are multiple different planters that we strategically placed so that they gap either trees, lights, signal poles. This would be offered 365 days for this park. Right now, my staff allows for three days a year, we put protection up. We use that with concrete jersey walls. These would be more decorative. The thought here would be offering up these as more planters, maybe even introduce every other one, can be a full seating concrete bench. So again, this park has a variety of new amenities we don't have right now, or a little different style. So when we're talking about these large numbers, remember, it's not just for the structure, it's just not for the bathrooms. And to be fair, that the entire project is being considered underneath one piece of work. We are offsetting and also protecting some of the on-street parking, that currently we have two spaces, and we are proposing a total of seven here. So as you remember, when the events do come up here, the parking is already closed off and not being able to use, and we often jeopardize some of the traffic movements or being challenged with trying to handle that. So this project would help address some of that. It did have a variety of extra lighting that was put inside of that, too. So if there's no more questions, the real item here, it is a construction awarded project being presented. Our low bidder is Elite Builds, $3.65 million. The finance and the funding is listed inside your packet. It was intentionally put together with the whole idea, the whole project, as there's a variety of things that have to be considered with this. The roof, the construction management, the design, all that wanted to be included in that. And that's why you see that number that maybe when you're looking at a construction project, you might not see completely. So all that's listed inside of there, and then the funding and how to get there. So if you have questions and want to go over that, we can, we can kind of discuss some of that right now.
No, thank you for your presentation and for the hard work with, regardless of which direction this goes. Jason, my hat's off to you and your team. You've put a lot of time in this past year to put something together, modify, adjust, listen to the community as well as listen to the council. So thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from council members? Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, first is just a technical question. On page two of the memo, we've got the funding gap debt issue of 846-543. When you go to the resolution, it says debt financing 978-543. Why is there a $130,000 difference there? Does anybody know the answer to that?
It might be because of a potential grant, and it might be because of the potential naming rights.
Mark? Well, I, do you know that to be the fact, Karen?
I'm going to ask Mark. I believe it is, but I'm going to ask Mark to clarify that.
So where are you? I'm looking for the number that you're referencing in the resolution.
It's in the debt financing on page one at the bottom. It says debt financing 978-543. I mean, that, to me, is straight-up debt financing, and then you have the funding gap debt issue, which sounds very similar, on page two of the memo, which is the 846-543.
Yeah, the 846 is the number. So I don't know if that was an older resolution. When we first started this, this was close to a million-dollar gap.
Okay.
So I'm going to guess that's what that is, and I apologize.
We think that's an erroneous number in there.
Yes. But the funding gap is 846-543.
Okay.
So if there's a motion made, we need to make sure that that correct number is put into the motion.
Mm-hmm.
846.
543.
543. Thank you, Alderman Rozak.
Got it. Just house.
Any other comments or questions? Alderman Maroni?
I just wanted to touch on the funding gap, like we're on that subject right now. Additional funding through, I mean, some of the options, Greater Milwaukee Foundation, Oconomowoc Area Foundation, Waukesha County Foundation. What kind of number can we expect from just ways to fill that gap?
Have you reached out to any of those? Are you speaking on?
No, no, I just, I just, I missed.
I just want to be clear.
No, no, I have not spoken to any of them. I'm just, just options that I have heard as ways to do this. I have not spoken to anyone.
Mark?
So when we started this project, one of the things we wanted to let the council know was, you know, we have some numbers that are defined and we can put in there. These are other grants and things that come up during the year. We don't have any numbers on those right now. But those are ones that we will look at, but, you know, we didn't include anything from them to try and lower the number. So if we get any money, it will help reduce those numbers that we're already looking at.
Mm-hmm. The gap would be the worst-case scenario.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, fair enough.
But there's also other potential revenue streams, but we didn't tell we have a project, we can't pursue those. Alderman Spiegelberg.
I don't have any more questions for Jason. Does anybody else have any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going to start some of my comments.
Alderman Douglas?
Okay.
So one of the things we see or hear, excuse me, is $5 million for bathrooms and a pavilion. So hypothetically speaking, and I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this question, if we were just to take the pavilion and the bathrooms out altogether, what's the cost of the pavilion and bathrooms? And then what's the cost of like the park and the way it sits, taking that structure out?
Well, if I was, can I answer that?
Answer it any way you want.
Well, the construction cost is 3.6, right? So it's less than half of that. So it was 1.4?
1.1?
1.2. Yeah, it was right in that 1.1, 1.4 mark, out of that 3.6.
So roughly a third.
So a third?
Mm-hmm. Do you mind if I just add one clarification to that, if that's true? But you still have an additional project cost, which is the roof structure is a separate line item of 420. So it's 1.1 plus 420.
Correct.
Okay.
I was just trying to compare construction cost of that.
Right, for the project, and then you still got to put the roof.
Which does include the installation of it.
Right.
Just not the structure.
Any other questions for Mr. Herzog? Or we can then also discuss it. We could bring him back up as well. Sound good? Thank you, Jason. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Okay, I'm going to jump out there first. I just want to thank Sarah Nindman, all the downtown business owners, and everybody who showed up at the presentations with showed up at the presentations with very positive comments on wanting to do something here. I'm going to vote to move forward with this and some of my other reasons are these. This conversation has been going on for years. Will we have bathrooms? Yes, no, yes, no. Okay? And then much of that was a moving target aspect on what we thought Rockwell Partners was going to do. When it looked like Rockwell Partners project was not going to materialize on May 7th, 2024, this council voted eight-zero, that's all of us, to give staff direction to put the design that included the bathrooms out for bids. That design cost, as you heard tonight, was 232,000 dollars. We then got public input on the design. We got great feedback. We took a lot of that into consideration. Things got tweaked a bit here and a bit there. And as you heard tonight, we can potentially even tweak things a little bit more if we need to. So then we voted to put the construction of the park, as was rendered, as is rendered tonight, out for bids. We talked about some of the things that could be maybe tweaked, maybe shorten up that pavilion stage area, maybe a few other smaller design changes, more historical-looking lighting. We could do some historical posted pictures in the windows, et cetera. And now the bids have come back and we needed to look at how we could fund this. Our finance director, the city administrator and our mayor felt very comfortable bringing forth a solution to do so in a responsible way to our taxpayers. And that included park impact fees, TIF money of 1,750,000 dollars, 1 million of which is set to expire in September if we don't use it. We also have unrestricted funds available. Prior councils were prudent in seeing that we have a healthy unrestricted fund balance to potentially contribute to a large legacy project like this. There's grant money available, money from tourism, and that only leaves a funding gap of about 850,000 dollars. This is only about 18% of the entire project. That amount financed will only cost the average household in Oconomawak 11 dollars and 37 cents per year for 10 years. That's a price of about two beers or two Starbucks a year. Also, for those who are debt-averse, I think we need to keep in mind that the city of Oconomawak only has 28% debt right now out of a legal amount that we could potentially incur. Most communities would kill to have the low amount of debt that we do in the city of Oconomawak. As far as our neighbor to the north who wants to build an awesome condo, and we hope something does happen there, I think we all want something special there, we've been assured by their attorney this past week that they are not looking to pursue litigation. They just want some compromise. While we feel confident that we would not have to necessarily give them any more city space to construct their building, we will certainly work with them for ingress and egress during construction and we're willing at any time to sit down at the table and perhaps compromise on a small amount of width to give them. Jason spoke about that tonight, too. So in my opinion and the opinion of a lot of Oconomawak folks, whose opinions I represent here and I really respect, I think we need to move forward with this project. And if we don't, one, we will be left with no bathrooms once again in a highly-used area, keeping much burden on the downtown businesses. Number two, waiting will certainly cost us a lot more money, a lot more money, putting more strain on the taxpayers to an unknown degree. That's an unknown number right now. We have known numbers. The design cost of 232,000 dollars that we have incurred already will be a sunk cost, gone. Almost all of the time spent by department heads and staff is also an incredible amount of time that costs money. We don't even know how much that was. The whole thing would be a waste of money and a waste of process. So why did we, as a council, vote eight-to-zero to proceed and then vote to put it all out for bids to only potentially pull the rug on it tonight? These are my facts and the reasons why I want to move forward with this tonight. This is an incredible project. It's an opportunity to continue to bring our community together, our citizens together, bring others to our community. This was the wish of our people when we took on the Village Green, when we were able to acquire the Village Green, that it someday we would have a legacy project like this to enjoy for generations and decades to come. That's where I sit with this.
Alderman Altman Klose?
You're a hard act to follow, Karen. I agree with a majority of what you have to say. I will say going back, because you did say this a few times, the eight-zero vote to move forward with this project was before we knew the number. I mean, I could go and approve my family budget to go buy a Mercedes tomorrow, but when we find the price tag on it, it's going to probably be a no. Looking back on the last nine months of this, yes, there is a need for bathrooms, but in the time in which we started talking about this particular project and these particular bathrooms, the council approved bathrooms at Rockwell Park. We are putting in new bathrooms at the city beach. We have a bathroom at Fowler Park. We have bathrooms that are at City Hall. I know someone had said earlier, we have a lack of bathrooms in our community and we don't. Do we have a lack on Village Green? Yes, but there's a lot of other options to use the restroom throughout the community. Do I want to see bathrooms at Village Green? Absolutely. Is this project the right one? Probably not. I do think that we could do a better job as a city to let people know that during business hours that the bathrooms are open at City Hall. That is something I think we've asked for in the past and there's no signage, there's nothing to kind of go about it. The other thing, when we originally started talking about bathrooms, the thought was we needed something that just could support the day-to-day and maybe the beer gardens. We knew that for bigger events, we would have to bring in portageons. Why we went to six stalls, five, is it five or six, Jason?
Six.
Yeah, six each. That's, I mean, 12, that's a lot. And I know that we've had some conversations about, you know, we're not trying to compete with the bandshell, but do we really need two stages so close together? No. I'm a no on this. I don't think that the spend right now is a responsible spend. We have a huge election, early voting started today in two weeks, that depending on the direction of the Supreme Court could greatly impact our city budgets. And spending five million dollars on a luxury project right now, just, it seems very irresponsible.
Other comments from council? Alderman Spiegelberg wants to talk.
I just wanted to clarify something on the bathrooms. At a point when we initially were talking bathrooms and we talked about putting them on the side of Vino, et cetera, I would like to ask the mayor and the city administrator if that is even still a potential option, because I believe it's not.
I spoke with the landowners to the east of the Village Green and they are not able to be here because they're out of town. And they basically have stated that they do not want them on the side of the, et cetera. That is, now, that doesn't mean we can't put them on it from a city perspective. Want to make sure we're clear about that. But they feel that that will really have a negative impact on their developments and their buildings moving forward. They are 100% behind the current concept and the current design. So I reached out because I actually had that question and then I actually mentioned it to Karen. So that, when we look at that, we have to put all of these different pieces in place. Alderman Rozak?
So, well, we got some good comments. I'm just going to roll through a couple of things. One, on the issue of whether the building on the one side doesn't want bathrooms, that's an interesting argument because we have the neighbor on the other side that's saying the bathrooms will affect their development. So it's kind of, one's not going to be happy no matter where we put the bathroom. So to me, that's a wash. It really is meaningless for the discussion. I've been a champion of this project since day one. I wrote an article in the paper back in January and I agree with Alderman Spiegelberg. It was an eight-o vote to push it on for a bid. And that is, again, like Alderman Klose said, that was before we knew the numbers. I don't think any of us knew when we started really digging deep into this nine months ago-ish, that this was going to be a five-million-dollar project. It's a big spend and we do have to be responsible with the money. And I don't think we should shy away from what those numbers really mean. So we're going to use money from TIF District Four and Six. So that's a million dollars from District Four and 750,000 from TIF District Six. That's tax money that right now the schools and CTC are not getting out of those districts. So if they close early, that becomes a credit essentially to all taxpayers in the city. It's an offset. We're using park impact fees, 663,000. Those are taxes to new residents. Tourism fund, 400,000. Those are taxes to friends and visitors to the community. Street levy, we're taking 450 out of the streets for next year. That's money that is being spent from the taxpayer and also can't be used on streets. Contingency funding, that's out of our reserve account. That's 506,000. That's taxes already levied to people and already paid that's sitting in the account. And then you have the debt financing, which is about 800,000, which is extra new taxes on each homeowner. So, I mean, let's be clear about the project. It is, in fact, a new tax across the board and does put us in less, I should say, a less favorable financial position moving forward. I kind of look at this like a homeowner. If I had, and I'm not opposed to the project just because we have a neighbor that's threatening lawsuit and the information that Alderman Spiegelberg presented about these guys not wanting to sue us, I mean, that's not what I heard two weeks ago. I mean, that attorney stood up there and said he has a complaint drafted. So I think it's something we need to think about. We shouldn't, you know, bury our head in the ground on that. But if I'm thinking as a homeowner and I had a dispute with my neighbor about building, I don't know, a basketball court in my house that I don't really need, but it's a luxury item, and the homeowner says, I'm going to sue you because you're in an easement area or utility area and if you build it, I'm going to sue you. I signed the contract and then I get sued and then I have to rip it out, that is a poor and irresponsible decision by me as a homeowner. So I try to treat the taxpayer money as my own. It's not a decision I would make and I'm certainly not going to make that decision for five million dollars in this case. The uncertainty of the lawsuit has weighed heavy on me for this project since about four weeks ago. We had a very lively dispute with the Rockwell attorney. I do think they will file suit. I don't know what the outcome of that lawsuit is. I don't think anyone does. I believe we have strong legal standing. I believe we have strong legal standing, but there's no guarantee of a victory and there's no guarantee that something doesn't end the project for some period of time. This is still five million dollars and if the project stops, that's not a good thing. Look, and I agree with what Sarah Nindman said. If I vote no tonight, for me, this shouldn't be the end. We do have some sunk costs, but saying that we spent money sunk on a project that we can't reuse, that's technically a logical fallacy. That's saying because we spent 4% of the whole project, we have to move forward. That's an illogical decision. What we need to do is say, what can we reuse from the 232 we spent? I like the plans. I've always liked the park plans, but they are expensive and there's portions of this plan that certainly can be reused and that entire 232 is not a waste. I did like the one other thing that Alderman Klose said, which is, man, I'd like to drive around a Maserati, but I can't afford it. This is kind of a Maserati right now for us and I don't want to put us in any kind of negative financial position. The last thing I'll say, kudos to the city staff, Jason. I really liked everything you've done. I think there's still a lot to work with here and I disagree with people that said they didn't have information. I think that's patently false, patently false. I did an article in January in the paper about this project. We did listening sessions in May and June last year. It's been in the paper. It's been on Facebook. It's been on city council meetings, like half a dozen times, architectural board meetings. If you haven't opened the paper or looked at the website or looked at Facebook for the last nine months, that's not our fault. We did everything we could to get the information out. That's absolutely my position. I think we did a good job at it. So if people are saying, hey, we don't know about it, it's really late in the game, you're just not paying attention. I'm sorry. We put the information out and I think city staff did a great job getting that out. So that's all I have for now. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Ellis?
Jason, all the work you did, outstanding, really good. In theory, I was a yes and the reason there being is because I loved the way everything was kind of drawn out. I was a little reserved, though, and I haven't said much because I wanted to know how much it was going to cost. And five million dollars is five million dollars. My concern is the all-or-nothing approach. We either accept it as it is or we don't get it at all. I believe that we should be able to still do something with the Village Green and maybe not with the pavilion. Maybe we just put up the bathrooms and how would that cost look, which, I mean, we haven't broken down, I know that already. I'm having a hard time with the all-or-nothing approach. I really am.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Alderman Spiegelberg?
Couple of comments regarding the attorney. Yes, he did stand up here in front of us and threaten to sue us, but after that meeting, we all received an email saying it was not their intention to litigate and that they would like to potentially talk about acquiring six more feet of space in there and not, I guess, what they had originally requested. So we did receive an email on that, every Alderman did, and that put a lot of assurance in my mind as well. The other thing is, you know, we talk about the taxes, but again, I'm going to be voting yes tonight because I'm representing the people that have reached out to me and said, we want this. We know this is going to cost us a little more in taxes. We understand the financial ramifications of this, but we want this. And this is a legacy project that will last for generations and decades to come.
Alderman Mulder?
I would agree that post-eight-o vote, when we got the number, it was not a number I had in mind. It was much higher than that, probably foolishly. So when we looked at that, we probably should have seen four or five million dollars. A lot of people talk about not needing the pavilion. I think it's an excellent addition to this. I think that the bandshell, while it can host a band as well as a different kind of event, this is something that can be much more active. That tends to be a little bit more passive just because we have the picnic tables and the benches and everything up front. It kind of moves the stage away from the people. Something like this for the beer gardens and things like that where we have, you know, a small band right now in a pop-up tent off to the side, I think that this would make that nicer. I do, I've always felt like the Village Green, as it exists right now, is a miss. It has a lot of concrete. It has retaining ponds that I know are natural wildflowers, but look like weeds that block the lakefront. And I don't, Matt, you talked about use of the TIF funds. We regularly use additional TIF funds. This isn't any different than other, it's a different use, but we have often used excess TIF funds on projects that, around the city. So that, your points are right, but it's not as though this is a one-time event and we're doing something that's out of character for the council. So I think it's a great project. I do think that it puts us, it's a very difficult one for me. I think it really does teeter on that, is it a luxury or is it a necessity? I think even if we took the pavilion out and we said, and let's say we can do the bathrooms for a half million, so we said the whole project was going to be three and a half million, I think we'd still be choking on three and a half million dollars to update the Village Green. I think that the pavilion pushes it over the top, but if you took the pavilion out and I said, I need three and a half million dollars, you still wouldn't want to fund that. That's, it's just, it's a big project. I don't know that five million feels a lot different than three and a half million to me. Obviously, it does, but it's still a very big number that would require all of those different funding sources to do. We would, we might not need debt in that case, but we would still be using the TIF funds. We'd still be using, you know, street funds. We'd still be using park impact fees. Like, honestly, a lot of those are, the park impact fees, this is the exact mechanism that that's in place for, is to build parks. Like, that's why it's 2,300 dollars for every new home or whatever the number is. So it's a project that's kind of fraught with problems because of the size of it and the base level need to take over an acre and turn it from a park back into a park. I don't know if I have a point, but those are my thoughts.
I just want to make one comment, too. I just, I thought, it was the first time I saw it, was earlier tonight, Jason, trying to accommodate and being a good neighbor to the people to the north and to that property owner. I think you've come up with a great solution that can work and try to meet those needs. Whether a lawsuit is filed, yes or no, you know, we don't know. That's their choice, but I don't think that their lawsuit really holds any water. We're not taking any of their property, doing anything. But, you know, Alderman Rozak is correct. You can still file a lawsuit for anything. But I also think that we can sit down and say, okay, how can we help them to the north create that very, very special building? When you look at the different funding, this is a very creative funding, and I keep going back to the tunnel underneath Highway 67. That was, you know, seven to 900,000 dollars to open. That was, you know, $700,000 to $900,000 to open. Ended up over $2.1 million only a few years later. When we look at the TIF funding, yes, those are, that is tax revenue. But it's also a way for the city to spend a very small portion, 34% to 37% of that million dollars is actual tax dollars that would come to the city. The rest, yes, go to the other, I mean, other disciplines and other taxing authorities. But it's the smallest, lowest cost of capital we can ever have to build and fund a project of this massiveness. Now, I've been in the different meetings and, you know, it's up to the council to make this decision. But the complexity of what they're trying to do, and when I see the people in the audience and trying to put the, and watch them every year, do the German Christmas market, the electricity, all of the different components, all of that infrastructure costs a significant amount of money. Can you imagine how fast that tent will go up and will come down when they don't have to adjust the height by close to two feet? And the reduced cost that it'll have there for the community? So I think you, we've done everything and Jason and his team is, which is a lot of people, have done everything to try to address all the different needs. And it's really going to be up to the council. But this has to be a six to two vote for this to pass. And so I think we're at a very large tipping point. The comments that I've received have mostly, I would say 90% of the comments have come back to me personally have all been positive. People would like different potential architectures to the structure. And I compliment the resident that came up and talked about that. That can go a lot of different ways. I don't think there's any park that we will ever get even 80% agreement on because we all have different ideas of what it should look like and how it should function. So I think, council, you have an incredible project. And we're at that tipping point to either move forward or step back. Now, Sarah, I saw that you had raised your hand and you keep clapping. You are allowed to come up. You have a comment?
Thank you so much. I just want to shed one more small piece of light on this. As I bring in a lot of these events that have happened downtown, the 15 events that we're bringing from the downtown business district underneath the chamber, the businesses that we're facilitating, the sponsorships that we're getting, the change in, in the direction of the chamber is going to grow. We're coming, we're able, because we're bringing those events to our, to the chamber, we are able to bring our chamber down on the main street. We are, we are going to be able to serve. I guarantee you, we are going to grow. We are growing, we brought 27 new members in this last month. That has never happened before. Because the events are coming underneath here, you're creating, 350 days out of the year, we certainly are just, you can call it luxury. But you're creating event space for Sharon, for me, for the future. And we're able to give back to, to the community. I bring in 15 nonprofits for these, for these events that we are able to give money back to. Sharon brings in the same for German Christmas market. We are bringing OAF, OSF, all these different, we're able to give back to the community, not only from the chamber aspect for businesses that are engaging with us, but also back to our nonprofits. So with this project, you are doing a significant due diligence to your community for all the things that we are giving back to, not just for, you know, me or one chamber. We are giving back in multiple, and people are coming to us because they, they're excited about this. And you're helping create that space by doing something like this. Thank you.
Thank you. No problem. And just to help the audience understand, this project, when it's bid out, if it changes more than 10%, it has to be rebid. So it's not like you can cut and chop different pieces out of it. So in essence, when you look at the process the city has to go through and design and work, so let's say we decide to move something or change something out, it's more, more than 10% of the construction cost, we have to start over. So I want the community to understand the likelihood of something happening in this calendar year, if the vote is no, is remote. We can try to do a lot of different things. We can try to accomplish as we want. Other council members? Jennifer?
No, I was just curious.
Alderman Klose?
No, I just thought the 27 into the chamber this last month was kind of a, I mean, it was, I don't know what, how do you, how many do you normally enter in, in a month? How many were brought in in January and February? Oh, so it wasn't just last month? Okay.
Alderman Rozak?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things as we kind of ponder. And I think more people may talk yet. This is a big decision. This is probably one of the toughest decisions I frankly have had to make on council. This is, it's a lot of effort on our part. I, I still really do like the design. I don't think it's too modern. Matt, to your point, if it was 3.5 million, I think it would be a little different discussion. I, I think it did come in a lot higher than we expected. And we're having to use a lot more funding sources than we have for any other projects. I'll also note, we're spending a lot more money on the boat launch because we had community participants, the village and the old town, who refused to put in what they promised to put in. So we're, we're another $650,000 into the boat launch that we just approved last year because we don't have participation. So there's a lot of money going out the door and I think we should be fiscally responsible for it. But I, I want to let people know, this, this is a tough decision. It's not taken lightly. But I, I do want to, one clarification, because Karen keeps clarifying what this attorney said. In the letter, at the end, here's what the letter says. Okay, just so we're clear. Rockwell's not looking to litigate the case. But then they go on. Rockwell's looking to cooperate. But then they go on. However, if the city insists on providing zero cooperation with Rockwell on this issue, then Rockwell will pursue litigation. This litigation could be costly and could prevent any development of lots 13 and 15 for years. So be clear, that letter on March 4th was not a letter saying we weren't going to litigate. It was like, we might not litigate as long as you do everything we ask you to do. And what they asked, and yeah, Karen, that's what the letter said. If you look at the letter and you look at all the demands, even with the changes we've made, we don't comply with those demands and we don't cooperate.
And to help the audience know, we've been in closed session multiple times with our city attorney to talk about the pros and cons of the litigation. We can't share those comments about our conversations there. But that is one component of, of the, of the risk factor of doing this. But I also, I would like to make one comment that, I probably shouldn't, but I think it's appropriate. Matt, you, you, you made a comment that it's kind of a wash between the current existing building on the east side of the Village Green and the open moonscape rocks as it doesn't matter because each one, it's a wash as to which one. I think it's really important for our community to really support the people that invest in our community, the small businesses. And I'm not trying to throw you under the bus because I don't think you meant it that way. But, you know, we have people that have invested in here and that group of people, and I see a lot of the people here in the room, they have a lot of skin in the game. We yet to have really any core skin in the game. And we have no idea what the development is to the north. We have ideas and concepts, but we have, nothing has been proposed or submitted to the city for 14 months. But I think it's really, really important that we try to be the best that we can as, as property owners. We don't have to give our property to anybody. The city doesn't. But what we do need to do is try to make sure we have positive developments moving forward. And I think Jason's adaptation, which I thought was brilliant, really provides that for that property to the north. And really, you know, gives that opportunity. And I would love to sit down and say, okay, how can we help them build something really cool? And I've worked with both Alderman Spiegelberg and Alderman Mulder, our president and vice, I mean, Alderman Rozak, president and vice president, to hopefully be able to do that moving forward if this passes with a yes vote. So there are a lot of moving pieces. What I also want to give you a ton of confidence is every one of these Aldermans have worked their butt and they've really been engaged in the process. They've done their due diligence. They've looked at all of the different aspects of this project. So whether this goes in the way you want it to go or not, I think you have an incredible council that really cares about what's best for the city, no matter what their vote is tonight. Other comments from council?
Alderman Mulder?
Well, I, I, too, I think, Sarah, your comments about not leaving with a no vote and nothing else, I guess I'd be interested to hear from those who appear ready to vote against this. What, what would that proposed solution be if we have $3.5 million sunk into the park without a pavilion or bathrooms and another, let's say it's going to take, it's going to take a half million to put them anywhere? Where, where are we going to put them? Or are we going to abandon the concept of bathrooms down here?
Alderman Douglas?
I guess the topic came up about to the east there, right? Where I think we originally talked about it, man, 2022? And I think Alderman Mulder called it the pimple on the green, I think, at that time. I guess my, my question is, do we, with the overlays down there, do we have the right to build it there? With the, is it a zero setback? Is there any issues with building it on the east side?
We have the ability to put the building there. The question, what I do know is the owners no longer want it there. That was told to me yesterday.
Which is interesting because when we originally talked about it three years ago, they were all for putting it there.
That's correct. And we even looked at it in different locations, even towards the lake. But what they're looking, what they have told me is they're looking at the investment value of that property and that it's going to have a long-term negative effect on them. That's their interpretation. But I can't truly, they've given me permission to say this. But I don't want to, I don't want to say much more because they need to defend that themselves. And it's not applying. I mean, what we have is a project in front of us. And is that, is this grandiose project, which has been creatively financed? Is this something you want to do or not? And then if not, coming back to Alderman Mulder's comment, well, if we're going to, if we're going to vote no and it's not going to pass, then what's the next steps? Because we've talked and this has been going on for 10, 15 years. And all the different locations, there have been committees. I see Lou sitting in the back. He spent a ton of time on this. He and a bunch of people have walked around looking at all the different locations and all the different areas. And this is what we landed on. And so that can, that can happen. But what we need to decide is what, today is kind of a go or no-go day and on this project. And if it's a no-go and we want to redo something, we can always do that. But there is a time component to that and the potential of not being able to use TIF dollars, which is much more favorable for the city residents than to use other taxable revenues.
And Alderman, Alderman Klose?
I'll answer your question. And I mean, I've, I've said this before. I'll be honest, I don't remember if it was in closed session or committee of the whole. So forgive me, Attorney Riffle. But I'm, more recently, I did make a comment about putting, going back to putting it on the east side of that building. I do find it a little suspicious that, you know, at, at this point, when we're about to vote on this, now they don't want the building there. Feels a little like they're kind of pressuring us to just go ahead and vote for it and kind of taking that off the table. I don't know if that's true. They're not here to defend themselves. I'm also not opposed to keeping the building where it is, but bringing it down a lot. We don't need six stalls. We don't need a stage. We need bathrooms. We need to protect Village Green. We need to, you know, there's obviously work that needs to be done. So that would be my solution. And I've shared that along this entire journey. That's not new.
So if that's a $4 million price tag, is that a more?
I don't know what price tag I'm okay with, to be honest. But I'm not okay with $5 million. And to go back to what the mayor said earlier about, you know, people are overwhelmingly in favor of this, they're not. I mean, look at, look at next door neighbor. Look at Facebook. Look at our email. Look at the people that came here and spoke today. I think you could almost make the fair statement that it's pretty half and half on who's in favor and who's not in favor of it.
So I would, I would disagree with that respectfully. But I also find that some people are really connected and look just at social media. Some people get phone calls. Some people get emails. And sometimes they don't talk to all of us. So I think it's hard, while you're saying it's 50/50, I don't know how in the heck you can even come up with that estimate.
I'm saying just.
That may be a gut feeling that you have, and I respect that. But there's no way to really know. But I don't have, how many people are here?
There's no way to really know that it's 50/50 from what I'm saying. But there's a way to know from what you're saying that it's overwhelmingly positive.
It's overwhelming positive to me personally? Is it in the whole community? Everybody, as I'm saying, everybody has different communication. That's, that's all I'm saying. And there is no way that anybody here on the council can say this percentage is in favor and that percentage is not. We all can say this is our perception based on how people have communicated with us. And that, that's all I was saying.
Yeah, Alderman Spiegelberg?
I think we need to be careful when we listen to all the naysayers on social media because they all scream a lot louder than some of the people who just, who genuinely want this. I walk around the lake. People talk to me. They say they're excited about this project. I think it's a fantastic project. I think we need to move forward. It's going to cost us a lot more money if we wait. We have very creative ways that we have financed this to lessen this whole impact on the taxpayers. And this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to do this and then be able to enjoy it forever and ever. Citizens, non-citizens, all the events that Sarah and Sharon and downtown business owners are, are bringing into the area. That's my final plea.
Alderman Ellis?
Alderman Maroney, you had asked a question in reference to other funding sources. Can you reiterate the question, please?
Well, I was just trying to find out different aspects, different avenues we could use to fill that gap, that 846, 543.
And who were they?
I had mentioned them again. And Mr. Fry had mentioned that, he explained it, the, how that worked as far as those being listed. It's Greater Milwaukee Foundation, Oconomowoc Area Foundation, Waukesha County Foundation, as possible options to help fill that gap.
Okay. Because my other concern, I have two concerns. One is, Karen, you had mentioned that it would only be, it would only be an additional $11 added on to our taxes. When is enough enough?
What?
When is enough going to be enough as far as adding additional monies to our taxes? Let me finish, please. That concerns me. The other thing is, if we vote on this and it is yes, we are, as I see it, we're saying we can handle the $850,000. Okay? So now the other entities that you had mentioned may or may not want to contribute to this. Because as far as they're concerned, they're thinking we can go ahead and handle that. So one of the things.
One other option to help you with this line?
Can I please finish?
Not yet. One other thing, one thing that hasn't been brought up is there's a potential naming rights to the pavilion, which could also bring in revenue. And that's already set up to an RFP to go out if this passes. That will also decrease it. The goal in putting the worst numbers forward is we don't want any surprises. And so going back to Alderman Maroney's comment, you have potentials of people donating money. But we also have the potential of naming rights of that pavilion. So I just wanted to make sure that got in the record. Please proceed.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you. That was good information. So, okay, so I said enough as far as I was concerned. I, I'm really having a problem with even more taxes associated with this. The $850,000, we're going to be saying to the general public and to those that may want to contribute, that we would, that we can handle the $850,000. I, I, I love the project. Please, don't get me wrong. I love the project. I think it's a great project. I'm a little sticker shocked. So what I'd like to propose, it may not pass, but what I would like to propose is that we go out to these entities and we find out exactly how much they're willing to contribute. We know that the.
Can't do it until there's an approved project. It's very, very difficult to fundraise without an approved project. It's possible, but it's very difficult to do that.
I respectfully disagree with that. Because they know that, number one, this is a city, the city, this is an entity. And the fact of the matter here is, we are $850,000 short of where we need to be. And the fact of the matter here is, whatever they don't come up with, we as a city might be able or will be able to come up with. So that when we finally have that final, so when we have that final, that final vote. So that when we finally have that final, so when we have that final, that final vote, we're voting on something that we know at the end of the day can be a lot less than what this is right here. I'd like to go out to those funding sources and say, hey, you want some skin in the game here? I'd like to see that happen.
Me too. It's just timing, the timing's wrong.
What I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a recommendation that we table this for a few weeks, and that we go out to these, these sources, and see if they will contribute. If that doesn't happen within a two- or four-week period, at that point in time, we have that final vote, whether it's a yea or a nay.
Mr. Administrator?
So when projects like this get bid out, the bids are only good for so many days. We are up against that. This was the last council meeting before those bids could expire. And without a high likelihood of this project being approved a couple of weeks later, I would not feel right reaching back out to that contractor and have them not bidding on other projects or looking for other work for another couple of weeks in the event this thing got voted down. Because then they're out. And they didn't do anything wrong, but submit a bid to us.
And we want to maintain the reputation of getting a lot of bids. And we did have this go a little longer, because we were trying to work with the property owners to the north to find different solutions there. So that's why else it would have come to vote earlier. Alderman Rosak.
Yeah, just to address Matt Mulder's question about what do we do next, I don't think this is the end, should be the end of the road. I'm completely in favor of bathrooms. I always haven't been downtown there, at that location, but I am. I've, I've said that publicly. I do think we need bathrooms there. I think the plan that we're looking at in front of us is, is a good plan. The bandshell and the sizing of the bathrooms and the location needs to get changed. And I, I think we could easily take the plans we have, shrink those bathrooms, and put them somewhere else. Whether that's next to the buildings on the east, or more in the corner, allowing space for that developer or another developer. I'm not, I wouldn't vote no, just because that developer threatened to sue us. But that developer, other developers, may need staging area. They may need, you know, two feet extra somewhere that we won't be able to give them if we put a $1.5 million structure there. So why not, why not downsize those bathrooms, put them in the corner, and keep the rest of the design the way it is? You know, so I, I don't, I don't see this as any end of the road. Now, yeah, we might have to rebid it. And the project, they might not start digging a hole until June or July. So what?
No, if we redo it and rebid it, they'll be, they would have, the project probably wouldn't start until next year.
Okay.
And that's, and I just want to be clear on that. There's nothing wrong with that, that's an option. But what-
And that's fine. I mean, so the point is not, I think we want to get something done right. What I kept going back to on this vote is, I kept going back and forth between yes, no, yes, no. And to me, that means the decision was so hard to make, with all the intricacies and everything going on, that it didn't feel right to me in my gut, for a variety of reasons I've already discussed. So to me, Matt, the future is, we have a really good plan that we spent money on. The community, I think, ultimately likes the entire park plan. The boardwalk, the walk into the lake, the look and feel of it, the more green space, the less concrete. The opposition, and the high cost value is from this large pavilion and 13 bathroom stalls. We have 13 bathroom stalls, we don't need that many. I mean, we're literally, this is like mall, mall-sized bathrooms on Village Green. So what we need to do is go back and say, we love this plan, keep that engineering the way it all is, shrink the bathrooms down to three, two or three stalls, stick it in a, in a small corner somewhere that's less obtrusive, that we can make look nice, and then be done with it. And I think we can do that and still accomplish a lot of things. Saving room for the, a future developer, getting the bathrooms and having a plan. And you know what, if it, if it happens next year, so what? How long did 517 take from the time we got the first donation to completion? Oh, we're still not done, right?
No, that's taken five, that's taken five years?
Yeah.
But then I'll, you know, I'm gonna challenge you on that, because it kind of, because I've used in the past pisses me off.
But it's not a negative, it's just if you want to do stuff right.
That one has, the city only contributes 11% of the whole project. The whole community.
Right.
That's what took so long, because we did all the fundraising. But if we want to do fundraising this, to Kevin's perspective, that's great. But what I can tell you from 517, those prices went up, went up, went up. The original design, we had to change. We had to do differences to it. So if you think you're going to have something like this, and you're gonna build it in two years, and it's gonna cost $3 or $4 million, I hope so. I hope so. But what, kind of coming back to Alderman Mulder's comment is, okay, if we're gonna do it, what, what, what are we gonna do next to bring this forward? And what is that kind of number going to look like? He said 3.5, correct me, Matt, if I'm wrong, or four? And then we're all still wishy-washy, and we're still going into a circle. And we have this jewel downtown, you guys. You have a way to fund it. We're taking $400,000 from tourism. You know where that money comes from? Taxes people pay to sleep in beds here in the, in the city of Oconomowoc. Yeah, they could be our friends, they could be relatives, but most of it's from people from outside of our community. So we have creatively, with the help of Bob Duffy, tried to come up with a way to make it the least impactful to the taxpayer as possible, and we're presenting the worst-case scenario. Now, that is just where we are in this process, and what can happen moving forward. All of the ideas are very great, but if we're going to downsize these, it means we have to start over. And if we're going to move them, then we have to start over with that. We have to go through that same process to a degree. I do agree with the concept that kind of everything else, we all pretty much like. And we could go forward and just do that with no bathrooms and no staging area. That doesn't always solve our problems. Part of the reason for that little stage is that we're trying to make bathrooms look better. You know, you have bathrooms, and they're, they're bathrooms. How do you make bathrooms look nicer? How do you make it so in the center of your downtown area? And that's what Jason and his team worked on, to have an area. We don't have a stage, we don't have to rent those anymore. Majority of the events with that number of stalls, don't have, we don't have all the porta-potties sitting all over there. We've come up with a solution for our neighbors to the north. Could they still sue us? Yeah. Look at, look at the security things that we'll have for all of our events, for people doing yoga on the Village Green. We don't put up Jersey walls for that. Now we'll have a safer area. So we're really at a tipping point, but we can also postpone this and redo it, but it means we need to start over. We need to start over from this standpoint. We can't even, we agreed 8-0 where to put the bathrooms in this, in this area. I don't know where the bathrooms would go then. You know, some say here, some say there. This has been going on for five years that I've been the mayor. So I'm just being the devil's advocate. I'm not trying to tell you to vote yes, vote no. Vote what you think is best for the community moving forward. I think there are a lot of things that we can do with the structure, some tweaks we can do to, you know, enhance some of the look to it. That's not going to be expensive. But I think we have a pivotal opportunity here. And everybody looks at the big number. It's how you finance the big number that's important. And yes, does it come at a cost to the residents? Is it worth it? That's what you have to decide. Alderman Spiegelberg.
Kevin asked me a question, so I want to answer that question. You said, when is enough enough? So at this point, we would be at $11.37 for the average house. If we do get naming rights for the pavilion, that can reduce it to a cost of $5.93 per average house, that's over 10 years. Debt is not a four-letter dirty word. It's a tool that communities use to be able to do things for their, for their citizens. We have to also keep in mind that the community center debt is going to be retired in 2031. That takes all of that off. We have other debt that will be expiring as well. And we're still staying consistent at that 28% of what we are allowed as a city to have as far as debt. And I said that before, it's extremely low. My concern with taking the structure down, and lowering the amount of bathrooms and doing this in a year, I feel like we will be paying the same amount for a structure that's smaller, because we're waiting longer, costs are going up, and interest rates may potentially go up. So I'm not so sure that's a solution either. I feel like we could be looking at the same amount for a smaller structure in only one year.
Alderman Douglas.
Jason, talking about six stalls on each side. I, refresh my memory, I think we were originally at like four? But the conversation happened that we could move to six for almost no extra cost, or very little cost, just based on the layout?
Yep, I'm glad you brought that up. I did want to address that, as we, we did present a four bathroom, three, four bathroom originally. And if you can see the bump out on the sides here, what we were able to, let's see if I can find a better image. We were able to rotate the, so the stalls all kind of come like right here. And the bathroom footprint didn't change much. What we did is we rotated, the sinks were over here, and the stalls were over here. What we did is we rotated the sinks over here, and did a bump out for them. And that, that created more square footage, and of ability to put those extra ones in there. So I'll say it might be a little challenge to kind of look at this linearly. If you say six cost this, four cost this, that'll be a struggle for me to agree with. Because I feel like, you know, the design itself will be a little unproportional at that point. So yeah, I did present that originally, a smaller footprint of this to the council, and described the option of that. The guidance here was to kind of go forward with this. So that's kind of how we developed this layout. The family restroom is right here. I think everybody was in agreement with that. What does span this a little bit is this walkway between that. And again, to the mayor's point, as I, I tried to stress this throughout, as we were trying to build character for the building itself, so that it didn't look like just a four-sided bathroom. And so we, you know, and the architecture helped us out tremendously too, just with the materials and, you know, a few pieces here and there that I thought improved it. The idea has always been from the beginning is, you know, we use very similar materials from the community center that is close to our downtown. You know, if we even advance that, you know, I've heard statements about making this historic, and you know, I'm not sure what the cost would be to kind of elevate a building like this to a historic-type materials. But I just wanted to give some background. As we did look at a smaller unit, we did present that it was going to be a 3.0 to a $3.5 million construction. I mean, I had it right up on here in as big as font as I could find in the very beginning. And halfway through, that we knew this was going to be an expense. To be fair though, I didn't have the construction management, I didn't have the contingencies, which is 10% on top of all this. So the contingency is adding up to about the balance of what you guys are discussing inside of the general fund use of this. So all your comments are pretty accurate for the purpose of, you know, today's dollars are not going to be tomorrow's dollars. A project that gets rebid, as we found out in Rockwell, and some of the other projects I've done, when you rebid them, everybody sees those numbers. Now that's the baseline. That, that depends and kind of controls what they have. We had a great interest in this project. As you saw inside that memo, we did have, I think, six or eight different bidders on this. So they all are aware of this. We had a great timing to bid this through the winter, knowing that they would have the spring and kind of some timing throughout the year to build this. That also controls your, your construction. Can we take components inside of this project and apply them into a different project? For sure. I would say we'd probably have to work with the same designer, because they have all the structural designs of the boardwalk, the I-beams, the footings, the bearing. Those are all like big, heavy design pieces. And I'm hearing that, you know, the boardwalk is not being challenged. You know, maybe the rest of the layout isn't, maybe it's just the footprint of that, that structure. So, you know, we tried to prevent this conflict of getting to this point, and saying, well, now, you know, I don't like this. So I guess I would, I would struggle moving forward, and I would probably need everybody's buy-in on how do, how do you build an acceptable project, or put a project together that everybody would buy into at that point? And what does that cost? So yeah, I mean, Mark can even break down the funding a little differently. I know Alderman Rosak touched on a few of those. There's, there's some pieces inside there that also could be, you know, explained further, if that would help.
Every decisions, you guys, big vote.
Just so you're all aware of, like, if you turn this down, you know, what will we be looking at in the future? You know, I know everybody's interest on the, on the board here is to try to put a project that's exciting, functional, and affordable. And how do you do that? So that's all, if you, any other questions?
Thank you for coming up. Any other questions from Council, Alderman Maroney?
I just had a comment, you know, finding common ground on what we've been trying to do for a long time here is really tough. And the mayor had mentioned that too. Getting everyone to agree on a project at this scale is tough, you know, to find that common ground. And we've worked through this, we've used a lot of resources. Jason and his team has worked very hard to put this together, along with a lot of other people. So I just think that it's something that's very important to the community, and we really need to take this one seriously, and really make the right decision here.
Alderman Kloth, I think you mentioned the addition of all the other bathrooms around the area, which is accurate. Each of those bathrooms are all seasonal. This is an all-season building, and that's another reason why it's $1.2 million, is that we have to heat the thing. So we had to consider different mechanical chases, going through some of the ceiling work. So that did contribute to that. If you wanted to look at a lesser-priced something, you would probably go after a non-seasonal-type bathroom structure, if you don't want to try to put a heating.
What is 517's bathrooms, are those seasonal?
Those are seasonal. So we usually winterize those, you know.
When they're, everything's done, right? Yeah, so next year.
Yep, so those are all Boat Launch, Rockwell Park, Fowler Park, Champion Field, Roosevelt. Those are all seasonal bathrooms. This would be your, pretty much your all-season bathroom. We would have, we have electronic locks on them, so they would be able to use at night. Obviously, City Hall closes at 4:30.
Ice skating, chili fests.
Yep.
All that use.
Alderman Alderman Kloth.
Do we have an idea of what the, the operational cost of those year-round bathrooms would be? You know, the size of it, just the upkeep?
I don't have numbers for you, but what we did in this is we did like air dryers, so that we didn't have to maintain that in any regard. It would, you know, take your operational costs during the season, and apply them, you know, equally through, because it's about a six-month season that you can keep these bathrooms open.
You just said they'd be open year-round.
These would.
These ones would.
So you would just double that.
Yeah, that makes sense. I would bet if they bid it right now, it'd be 10% higher, just given the world situation right now, and tariffs and different situations. This is, this project will get much more expensive. The same $5 million next year will get us, won't get us close to what's on the paper right now. Not that you want what's on the paper, but we have to be realistic. To get less next year will be the same price.
And for the audience, the staff does a really good job to try to get this bid and get estimates to us. In the last three to four years, it's been really, really hard. And prior to that, you know, they'd get estimates, and they're pretty much spot-on. But it is tough, because things are changing. What we like is when they change and they go down. Also to remember, when you think of the financial aspect, when we use a contingency, the goal is not to ever use that money. So 10% of this project is, you know, that's a lot of money, and hopefully we don't need it. When we look at the Boat Launch, the Boat Launch has a contingency. We had a really high contingency on that, because we were worried about a lot of toxic things that could be in the lake, or surprises we'd have from years past. And I can say we've used some of it, but we hopefully won't use a lot of that contingency. So we're crossing our fingers, but that's why those are in there.
You have comment, Mark, or no?
We will be using it. Dredge material.
Yeah. But it changes each- But it, it changes each time, so it's hard to know. Council, are you ready for someone to make a motion or do you would like to discuss this further? If somebody decides to make a motion, which you do not have to do, please clarify that the gap is $846,543, so there's clarification from what's in front of you. And to remind council, this is a budget amendment and this requires a supermajority vote of six of you for it to pass. Alderman, Al, Ellis. Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we can find out exactly how that $850,000 is actually going to be funded.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to table this in a second. Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Nay.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroni.
Nay.
Alderman Douglas.
Nay.
Alderman Rosick.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Nay.
And that is five noes to three yeses.
So that motion does not move forward. Alderman Douglas.
So discussion was had about when the bid is up. I guess one question was just tabling it to when we know when we're going to get the money to an unknown date. When do we have to basically sign the bid with the, with them? Like, what's the end date?
March 24th.
So not even for next meeting?
Correct.
Would anyone else like to make a motion?
Well, I'll, I'll move that we, with the amendment that we changed the funding gap debt issue to $800,046,543, that we approve this.
I'll second that.
Any further questions or comments? Alderman Shellpepper.
Final comment, Mayor. Man, it's been a lot of tough discussion tonight, a lot of good debate. I kind of came prepared without an opinion on one side. I've, you know, gone kind of back and forth just based on what we've heard tonight. I'm really excited about this design, about what we want to do for the downtown, for our community, to reinvigorate our green, maximize its utility for residents and businesses. I want a family-friendly design. I want an event-friendly design. I want a design that provides safety and I want a design that's aesthetically pleasing. Those are the goals that, you know, I feel like we needed to hit and that we tried to hit. And so like I said, I, I support 90% of what we have here, but, but, and I want it to become a reality. But I think the pavilion, the bathroom is, is the part I can't support. And I know we've gone back and forth and, hey, do you want it there? Do you, you know, where, where can we put it? Based on the feedback I've gotten from constituents in the last month, I just feel like I'd be going against my obligation and responsibility despite the awesome project that we've presented with to vote for it. I, I need to have the full confidence that we're doing the right thing and it's hard for me to do that even based on the interactions that we're having here tonight, the, the back and forth. It's hard to have that confidence. You know, I, I believe the pavilion doesn't complement the look and feel of our downtown. I believe the aesthetics and mass are not suitable right now. And that's bad, like I said, that's based on just feedback I've received and interactions I've had in the last month. I also think the structure creates significant legal uncertainty to the north. I know we've said that could be resolved, but it, but it might not be. We could still certainly be dealing with the litigation. So everything we kind of discussed here tonight that we think is going to happen could still just totally get gummed up and, and not happen because of this. And actually, and contrary to that, we could start working on this and, and get completely shut down and be into a whole nother morass. And so there's various unknowns to this. And, and because of the, the importance of the green, because of its high visibility location, we only get one opportunity to do this right. So we need a bathroom on the green. I've heard it from residents and businesses alike. I support the bathroom, but I think the pavilion is mission creep. And I, I understand the logic why, how we got there, but, you know, just, it still doesn't make it right. It doesn't, it, it wasn't, wasn't what's required. It wasn't originally planned for. I, I see it as mission creep. So what do we do if we don't put it there? I've heard different ideas tonight. You know, I've suggested multiple times, maybe never in a public forum here, to put it back by the et cetera. Tonight we find out, you know, that's actually not an option. Maybe you just leave it where it is and we cut out the pavilion. I'm less, I, I think the cost is important, but I think the, the importance of this project is also very valuable. And so I, I'm willing to deal with the cost, but I, we need to do it right. It needs to be right and it needs to have that support. And Jason says, well, how do you know, you know, how are you going to get to that support if we couldn't do it after this? You know, we'll get there. I mean, that's how elective bodies do it. I mean, we've all got to get to that point. And that's how states, federal, local governments, we, we find a way to make it and it just doesn't seem like we're there at that point. So I'd recommend we, you know, keep the current design. I love the current design, but let's, let's get rid of the pavilion. Let's do the scaled-down bathroom facility. I think we can do it without scrapping the whole project, still being able to use the TIF dollars. And I'd say to, you know, if this, it seems like this vote could very well go down because of the supermajority that's required. I'd say if the council should decide to pursue the route that I'm suggesting, it would strongly behoove Rockwell Partners to take this golden opportunity to reengage with the city and propose a new design they can afford, complies with the downtown overlay district, and does not require an unreasonable amount of taxpayer funding. So made it more clearly, if their proposed development doesn't generate enough tax increment to cover their TIF request and will force me and my neighbors to cover their costs through the tax levy, as was the case in their last proposal, it's not going to happen. Not now or not ever. So hopefully they take this golden opportunity to, to reengage. And so I agree with Sarah, we can't leave it hanging. We're almost there. Let's make the adjustments we need to and get it done. And the bathrooms are important, not the pavilion. And just because we spent $200,000 on the design, doesn't mean we spend $5 million on a design we don't all support. So thanks for hearing me out, Mayor.
Any other comments? Alderman Rosick.
Yeah, just briefly, those are good comments. Alderman Shellpepper, I, I want to move forward, like you said, with a future plan using the, the basics of this and readjusting the bathroom structure and the pavilion structure. I think that's the smart and wise thing to do here tonight. I'll also just remind the public, I mean, we have done a lot of projects in the city in the last year. We've really gotten, I think, two, three years ago when you approved Olympia, we've got that off the ground. 517 has been a huge thing. And frankly, that, when that final design came through, that was 15-minute conversation, 30-minute conversation on the floor. We just did the boat launch and we approved that plan through the city council. So to Jason's point, like, there are plans that have come to us that have been very, you know, easily received, had a lot of support and people liked with very little kind of public pushback. You're always going to see some public pushback. You're going to see people that don't like the color, the look, and, and I reject those kind of comments, but the, the tax money invested in this size of the structure, where it is and what we're doing and the potential legal ramifications pushed me to a no vote on this one. But I, again, remind the community, we've done a lot of stuff and I think we can still get this done and we could still maybe get this bid, whether that hole gets dug in fall or that hole gets dug in late summer or that hole gets dug in spring. I think we have the motivation here from what I'm hearing, the passion, to get it done and, and get it done right and make those tweaks. So that's, that's where I'm at. We've done a lot of good and I, I think we continue to do a lot of really good stuff for downtown and, you know, we're on the cusp of finishing this, I still think.
Any other comments before we go to vote? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
No.
Alderman Maroni.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Nay.
Alderman Rosick.
Nay.
Alderman Altman Cloth.
Nay.
Alderman Ellis.
Nay.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
The votes are five noes and three yeses. Motion fails.
For those that came for this, thank you very much for coming and for all your efforts. I think the council has heard those that are from the downtown businesses, that you definitely want to make sure there's something that happens. I can say it will not happen in the next few months just because of logistics, but we will do our best. All right, on to our next item. Thank you, everyone. Consider act on the resolution 25-r 3265 adjusting boat launch fees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see if I can get this pulled up.
Thank you.
That's a good one, right there. Boat launch right over that alley.
Thank you, Mr. Betcher.
All right. So on to boat launch. So as part of the boat launch redevelopment, we looked at adding a kiosk system. So the original kiosk system that we were looking at, the software was discontinued. So we had to look at other alternatives and we, we came up with this alternative Vantec. So I wanted to go through with you guys tonight and describe how this system works and then go over the proposed fees for the boat launch. So as you can see, this is a camera system along with a kiosk. So when you come into the new launch, you'll be able to pull into the launchery to launch your boat. The camera system will take a picture of your license plate on your vehicle. So we have two cameras, one on each side, so it helps us capture, capture multiple angles. So when you go in here, you'll drive in and it'll take a photo of your license plate and that's what determines what your fee will be. So this is an example of what you're going to be seeing from our camera. Takes a place, picture of the license plate and doesn't matter which state, and then that information will be uploaded into our system. So then we have a pay kiosk down there and at the pay kiosk, you can pay right there by putting in your license plate number and then that fee comes up. So the user will enter the license plate, they'll select the fee that shows on the screen, they then swipe their credit card. Once payment is made, the kiosk will print you a receipt and now you can use the system. User is now recorded in this system for the daily use. There are other payment options, so the user, once you go in there, you have 24 hours to make your payment into the system. So if you go in and use the, the launch and then come back and pay, you just have to do it within that day. There's other payment options. You can pay at the kiosk, you can pay online, or you can prepay and buy tokens. You can still purchase a season pass online or with us and purchase in person at the park and rec department. So if you don't pay, what happens is there's a record of each payment that's made. If you don't pay, your license plate is flagged and it generates a violation notice. That is then sent to our staff and we'll receive the violation notice to review. It shows a timestamp and it'll show the actual license plate and the vehicle that went through. So then we look at that and we can then issue that out, send an invoice to that person. The system will take that license plate number and get us the address. So the fee structure for the boat launch, the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, they set up their, their fees and we have to abide by that. So for non-motorized vehicles, we cannot charge a resident, non-resident fee, we can only charge one fee. So for canoes, kayaks, and paddleboards, the fee that we set is $8, which is $80 a season. If you look in your packet, there's a whole list of the fees that we can pick from, $8. The flat fee for that, we can charge $13. Non-motorized vehicles like sailboat that are on trailer, the daily fee is $13.75 or a season pass is $137.50. Residents and non-residents, this is where we can actually charge a non-resident fee. So the resident rate would be $13.75 a day, or you can get a season pass for $137.50. The non-resident would be $19.25 a day, or you can get a season pass for $192.50. So part of the system requires you to establish residency if you're a resident. That's what determines whether you get the resident rate. So residents would be required to pre-register their license plate through the system. They can either come in and do that with us, or they can get online and do that on the system. Once the registered user, we receive their information, we can go in and verify that they're a resident. Once we do that, then you're in the system, your license plate will always pop up as a resident and you'll get the resident rate. When you register, the reason it takes 24 to 72 hours is we have to go in there and manually make sure that you're a resident. Other systems, they can go by zip code, but here, zip code doesn't mean that you're necessarily a city resident. Those are not registered in the system. If you're not registered, you're going to pay the non-resident rate. But let's say you go in and you register and you use the launch, you can always bring that receipt in to us and we'll verify and we can refund you that resident rate or that, that discounted amount. So for commercial uses, we used to do corporate passes. This would, we would no longer do corporate passes. They wouldn't be available, but vendors could either go on our website and purchase tokens for the amount of times they need, or they could just pay at the kiosk like everybody else. The system also does allow us to track, so we could technically keep track of those vendors and then issue them an invoice monthly, but we'd prefer to do this first to see how that works because obviously you have staff time. So that is basically how our system works and with that, I'll answer any questions that you guys have.
Alderman Maroni.
We touched on this. I think the chief had mentioned it's actually, it doesn't go to collections. It's actually a violation, is that correct?
So what happens is when we issue the invoice or the, the non-payment, we'll issue that out. If they weren't to payment, weren't to pay it, then it would become a citation and then it would be turned over to the police department.
Okay.
Because they would manage it then.
Alderman Mulder.
The, are we, so the, the cost of the system is $47,000. Is that equipment we're purchasing that has a lifetime, lifespan, or will we, do they update the kiosk?
So that's the, that's the kiosk, the cameras and the installation. So they come in and they install it.
So we, we own that?
We own the equipment, yeah.
And do you know what, you talk about the transaction and processing fees, do you know what percent they get for that?
So there's the nine, it's like just under $10,000 to operate and then we do pay it, like a credit card company, we have to pay a, a fee for that.
And then we, would this eliminate a position or two at the lifeguard house because we don't need, they don't need to do the collection anymore? Or would you think staffing would be?
We would still remain with the same amount of lifeguards we have for coverage. This would just allow them to focus on the coverage. We would have this system in place. The nice thing about this is we have lifeguards from, you know, Memorial Day through Labor Day. So we're missing out on fees collected either when they're closed or before the season opens or after the season ends.
I can just, I, so if we're, so it's going to cost us $10,000 a year and I'll give us the, the high end, we're going to collect an additional $15,000. So we're netting $5,000 a year and we're spending $50,000 upfront. It's going to take us 10 years just to make our money back. By that time, that equipment will surely be, need to be replaced. So this feels like, it feels like we're spending money to lose money here. I know, I know people will be fairly paying to use our lake and that's a good thing, but we're gonna, we're spending a lot of money to not really get anything.
Well, and that 12 to 15,000, that's low end, I think. I didn't want to overinflate what we could possibly bring.
Even if it's off by 50%, but it's still a five-year payback, assuming that system is still good five years down the road. I mean, it just doesn't, it feels, it doesn't feel like we're solving a, we're not making, we're not, certainly not making a lot of money on this. At best, we're going to break even after five years.
So this was the one system that we could do something with the license plate in order to get the non-resident rate, which we knew was important to the council with this project. The other thing is, is that we don't have all of our lifeguards for this year yet and they're getting more and more difficult. I can't say how many years down the road we'll have a lifeguard there. No, we could pay someone that's not a lifeguard just to stand there. I understand that, but that was the other thought behind the system, to get the non-resident and make it so that we don't have to have a person standing there because every time they're not, someone's putting a boat in. every time they're not, someone's putting a boat in, and we're not getting, collecting for that.
Alderman Douglas.
So I guess, look at this, I have two questions. One, how are we paying the forty-seven seven fifty? Where's that coming from?
That's part of the project, so that was built into the.
Boat launch project itself?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, secondly, I guess, looking at the resolution, resolution's just for increasing the boat launch fees, but not the approval of the kiosk? Is that correct?
So the kiosk was part of the original project. The only thing that's changed was, yep. The only thing that changed was the original kiosk that we had looked at. So this was picked up recently because that one, the software, no longer is, isn't able to update.
So we're not voting on?
We're just doing the fees. Alderman Rosak?
Yeah, well, to their point, I was kind of in agreement with Matt, that it's, the payback is tough, but if we've already, it sounds like we've already, the money's part of the project, and it's already been spent, so I guess we're kind of, of course, we have to raise the fees. Can we raise the non-residents higher?
No, we can't. So, we're only allowed to do a hundred and fifty percent more, or this is the max that we can.
Okay, all right. Well, let's, let's keep, every time the statute changes, let's increase it.
Yeah, good point. Alderman Mulder.
Since we're going to have this, I know I've had some, my kids' friends have been lifeguards down there, and a lot of times when we try to close the launch, the boat users don't care and just back their boat up anyway, and the lifeguards are standing there, twiddling their thumbs while they're launching. Is there a way that we can find those people too, since we're going to now have their license plate? Is there a way we can indicate that the launch is closed, so then when people are illegally, or when they hit a boat, when they hit a limit at the launch?
The launch doesn't close.
They haven't, I thought we've capped the number of launches there before.
That's, can't do that anymore.
We used to. Used to, not anymore. All right. Oh, God, she does. All right.
We cannot.
Old news.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Alderman Spiegelberg.
Back to some of Alderman Mulder's comments. What do you think the life expectancy of the machine is? I mean, can the company tell us that to some degree?
Yeah, I mean, this company has most of the machines out there, like, a lot of the counties use this, so it is a reliable system. I'm guessing five to ten years. We shouldn't have any issue going that long, but I can't say for sure.
Other questions or comments from council?
Just going to be, oh, Mayor.
Please, go ahead.
It'll just be important for us to communicate with our residents about the new system to ensure we can get everybody on board. I think it's a great thing, because we need to help pay for the launch that we've just put a ton of investment in, and make sure that there's cost sharing among all residents of the community. And if we make a dollar off of it, then it's worth it in my book to ensure we're having accountability down there. We expect it in a lot of other areas. Why one of our most valuable assets, we wouldn't be requiring that accountability is beyond me, and I think it's a good thing. So, thanks for implementing it. And I think we're going to get way more than you're even predicting. I really do, so.
It'll be fun to hear next year what the numbers are.
Yeah. Well, now we'll be able to track it.
Yep.
It's going to be significant.
Like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Posed?
Aye.
Okay, we can do that once in a while. I'm trying to move this along.
All right.
All right.
You guys want the next twelve slides, or should I?
Thank you very much. Let's move on to our utilities. We're going to be talking about Consider Act on Resolution twenty-five dash R. three-two-six-three, awarding construction for, contract for Lapham Street Bridge Utility Relocation with Budget Amendments. Mr. Herzog.
All right, thank you, Mayor. We got a good discussion in our committee, utility committee, about this, but again, this is, this is in preparation for the bridge replacement we've been discussing for, I think, the starting point back in 2021, as we worked with this. And just to kind of update the council and maybe those watching, that this project is scheduled in the fall of 2025 and goes into 2026, and that would be the bridge replacement. That involves the bridge that's currently out there to be removed and replaced, and inside of that, there is utilities that are hung on the side, there's utilities underneath the bridge, and there's utilities below it or in the proximity of it. So, I've expressed kind of some of the staff-level work that we've been doing to try to generate the work for the bridge, and what you're seeing right here for the utility relocation is, Lucas and Kevin are both here from our utilities to support any of the work that goes on in there, but our office, Public Works Office, is kind of heading the project of the bridge replacement, so therefore you get to talk with me. And wanted to update you with what was going on, as the bridge project is funded federally and operated through our state, and also now a three-party agreement with the local government. So, we have to complete the utility relocation prior to any of that work starting. So we reached out to the community with a design that would incorporate a construction contractor to bore underneath the river, outside of our project footprint, so that we would be able to relocate the sanitary force main and a variety of public and private utilities, all in one big hole, and they'll pull back multiple cables all at once, kind of simplifies the process of trying to shoot a couple shots underneath the river. And we got three contractors to bid on that. They're included in your packet. Advanced Construction is the low bidder at three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars, and Globe is another familiar one. Mid-City has also been another common contractor we've worked with. So, we did reach out to Advanced Construction, talked with at least six of their references to confirm that they're capable of completing this work, and we got that feedback in a positive nature, and are recommending Advanced Construction to be a part of that for our work and awarded to them. Also included in your packet is the financial breakdown, as this was a split utility, as I've mentioned, wastewater with the force main. The electric company was funding fifty percent of that roughly, the waters inside of that, and due to that, and now, the work that's associated with the electric side of that being even, offset even more from the original budget in which they had prepared last year, there's the budget amendment listed inside of that. And we answered a few questions in committee, but can entertain any other questions related to that, as that was more or less the work that contributed, so that the electric can be included in this package, as well as some of our city staff to be able to work on doing some of that work on this project itself. So, some of those funds would be not dedicated to this contractor, but devoted to the work on completing this ultimately. So that's why you're seeing that budget amendment, and right now, as presented, we'd be looking to award the contract for three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-two, plus the contingency and the budget amendment.
Questions or comments from Mr. Herzog? I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Oh, aye. Thank you, sorry. Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
That motion carries.
On to our next item. Any reports or comments from Alderman this evening? Alderman Altman Clothe.
I would just like to make a comment that I think that it was extremely rude to Mr. Juno, who came in to talk about the house that was burnt down. There have been several times that you have had dialogue with people giving public comment, and even tonight, there was a few times you said, I know I'm breaking the rules, and then you just went. Also, a little concerning when I was really thinking about where he said he lived. I mean, that's just, what, three doors down from you?
About a half mile.
Okay.
Across the street. I had no idea it was coming.
Just kind of unfortunate to hear that there's a half-burned-down house that's been sitting there for two years.
I didn't know.
And I just want to thank Chief Fister for handing him my business card, so that he can contact us and hopefully help get it resolved.
Yep. And there are directions with that house moving forward, Alderman, but there are also personal family issues going on with that house, so that is being addressed. And I had no idea it was coming. Anything else I offended you with, Alderman Altman Clothe?
No, not at all.
Usually every meeting, so I'm getting used to it.
No, it's really not.
Any other comments from Alderman? Any other staff reports? I believe we have no staff reports. We have no additional comments from the mayor. So, we'd like to go into closed session, and I think we should just stay here. That way, we can just keep moving forward. Let me read this, and then I'll ask for a motion. Per Wisconsin State statutes, nineteen-point-eight-five-one-A, Wisconsin statutes to confer with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted with respect to litigation, in which it is likely to become involved as authorized under statutes nineteen-point-eight-five-one-G, specifically to the discussion of potential litigation involving the city, village of Lacle Bell, and the town of Oconomock. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved?
Second.
Call roll, please.
Alderman Mulder.
Aye.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Aye.
Alderman Maroney.
Aye.
Alderman Douglas.
Aye.
Alderman Rosak.
Aye.
Alderman Altman Clothe.
Aye.
Alderman Ellis.
Aye.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Aye.
We are now in closed session. Thank you all.